What's up everybody?
What's up y'all?
I think it is officially afternoon.
It's twelve o'clock on the dot so.
Twelve o'clock with forty-five seconds, so that's afternoon, right?
Yes, happy afternoon on a fine Tuesday. When Wednesday?
What's today?
Wednesday.
Quarantine life.
I'm like, happy Tuesday.
We are so glad that you guys are tuning in with us one more time and we are excited because today uh we are talking about prayer. So the last two weeks we were talking about reading scripture. We had uh Joel Muddamalle the first week and then we had uh Chris Stale Acevedo with us the second week also talking about reading the scripture.
Yes.
How do we approach it?
Yep.
What are healthy rhythms that we can do? And I don't know about you Alex, but it really uh blessed me, encouraged me.
It's been so encouraging to hear that.
And so if anybody's been blessed, I know I've been blessed and I'm glad you guys are are tuning in. So I see you guys coming in. Hey, hey, what's up?
Comment, do the hearts that help us too. And also guys, thank y'all for being committed to coming back. We know that hopping on and kind of even building this rhythm into the schedule can be a whole thing. So thank y'all for being committed. Keep coming back. It matters. It's important and we are grateful for you.
Yes, yes. And um if you don't mind, as we go through the process, like hit those hearts if you hear something that you like.
Yes.
Hit those hearts and also there's a little paper plane down in the bottom there.
Right over there.
And so feel free to hit that little paper plane, share that with your friends, let them know that we're on live right now.
We on live.
And that we're talking about prayer. The reality is uh for many of us uh we know that these spiritual disciplines are things that we should do.
Yep.
We know that, we know without a doubt, we know we should read our bibles, we know we should pray, we know we should sabbath, we should fast, we should serve, we should we should give, we know all these things that we should do. But to be honest, sometimes we don't necessarily know um how to do it. And here's what this time is about. I, you know, it's really funny. Last night I was literally um in Harris Teeter trying to eat healthy, looking for some oatmeal and all of that jazz, right?
The oatmeal?
Yeah, I was looking for some oatmeal.
But is it like the fruit cream oatmeal or is it the cinnamon oatmeal, like the maple brown?
Maple brown, all day long, throw the raisins in there, throw the raisins in there and we're popping.
Alright.
And so.
That matters y'all, you know it does.
And so um I remember literally last night in the Harris Teeter and um I'm going there and it's pretty late, they're probably about to close. And then the lady says, I asked, she says, do you, do you, do you know what you're looking for? Do you know where you're going? And I said, I'm looking for some oatmeal. Where's the oatmeal at? And so she could have just said like, hey, it's two hours down, you know, in the middle, on the left side. But she says, no, 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 I'll go with you. And she walked with me um all the way to it. I was like, man, that's, that's so kind. And so and that's what we're trying to do in this time. We don't want to just say, hey, you should pray, it's two hours down on the left. We're saying, hey, we wanna walk with you through this process um uh because it's important. And so up to.
And I was just gonna say, I think oftentimes too, for me, I'm really excited to talk with Pastor Curtis because prayer is one of those things that feels very um almost like impractical, almost like very fluffy and airy and like, how do you grab a hold of it? What's it for? And I'm excited to kind of bring it down into a digestible conversation.
Yes.
For us to be able to talk about prayer. Are we just kind of asking God for things? What is it that we're doing when we're praying? What is prayer? So I'm ready. I'm excited to see um what's gonna come out of the conversation.
Yes, and there's so, you know, there's so much, it's, I don't know, man, it's so interesting. Somebody, somebody in these processes when we talk about prayer can be so intimidating for some people. Uh some people have heard other people pray.
Yeah.
Uh and they're like, man, I love the way you pray.
Right, it sounds like tidy and put together.
Yes, yes, yes. And uh and so it's not about um how you sound, how articulate you are or whatever. Um it's not about how flowery your prayers are.
Yeah.
Um but it's really more about um you communicating with your father.
Right.
It's not about just what you get, it's also about who you're becoming in the process.
Yeah, alright, there he is.
There goes Pastor Curtis, what's up man?
What's up? How y'all doing?
How are ya?
We are phenomenal.
Y'all are doing good. I'm doing well. I'm doing really good. I'm loving, I'm.
Yeah, you know, we just care about Jax.
I just would like to see Jax.
Jax, I had to send him away cuz he would have, he would have, I mean, he could have preached today. He could have had, he had, I'm sure he had something to say, but he needed, he needed to kind of have his own space for right now.
Every time I do any kind of I do live at my house, and my prayer is like, God, please don't let one of my kids come in here screaming.
Yes.
I remember back last night when I was on the live with Pastor Derwin, Kingston Hoover unbeknown to the world walked in and was like, Mom, can I have a snack? He threw it at what Pastor Derwin, and my hand on my, under my desk is doing, oh dear mom.
Here you go.
My hand is doing this to him.
Speaking of Pastor Derwin.
There he is, there he is.
Oh my gosh.
He won and only.
The one and only.
The robot machine. The master of all ninety dances.
That's right.
Okay, he took, hey, he took a dance with it. Took you in the twenty twenty real quick.
This is no longer a prayer I do live, we're teaching you guys how to dance.
We are.
Dance. It's in, it's all in the spirit.
On this Instagram, this internet.
Talking about prayer.
Talking about prayer.
All about prayer. Yep, just like that. And that's, that is how you pray, world. There it is, guys.
Praying from my back, cause it's hurt. I broke my back. My back is broken. Final.
Not my neck, but my back.
Oh my gosh.
Well, there it goes. And and so.
I know, I know.
So um yes, we're so glad that you are here. Um I know what it's like for people to only care about my wife and my child. Um I know that life, so.
I know what it's like.
It's fine, it's fine. At, at our wedding rehearsal that I was Mr. King, I was not Mr. Miller, so it's, it's cool.
That is amazing.
Security though, the identity.
Well, Pastor Curtis, tell us a little bit about um your role at TC. Uh tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
Why not know?
Okay, yeah. Um so yeah, a couple of things. Man, at TC, I've, I've served in, in quite a few different roles, really cool. Um just kind of like something that stands out to me with that is I had a whole thing. I got a job all the way back, way back in the day doing as a gra, and I, I had learned graphic design in that space. I was creative and had some pieces. It kind of got me going. And um I had already worked part-time in ministry, so I was, I did worship leading, I did um small group stuff, all that kind of stuff. And um and so it was just really cool, like getting this job and being in this space that really was nothing that I ever really signed up for. In fact, I have associate's degree in elementary education.
That's amazing. I never knew that.
Right, right. It's cuz I left it there. I left it there.
I've known you for almost seven years, bro, and I've never known.
Okay, but are we surprised? Are you, I'm actually not, I'm not surprised. That makes so much sense to me. You're so kind. And we love you here and your heart is so big. Y'all, he, he gets to serve and care and I don't wanna go over what you were gonna say, but
No, you're good.
Total sense. You love people so well and people who work in education have a very special big heart.
Yeah, I got, I mean, I got a heart for educators incredibly because when I went to school for that, like I loved kids, I loved spending time with them. You know, I, I can even remember like having family that had certain elements of like um just learning that were, were difficult for them. And so I just like, hey, how can we have a space? I wanted to make an impact in that space. As I got in there, man, what it takes to go into it was incredible, but God obviously had a different path. And and so he led me, I, I worked in ministry part-time, worked full-time for this printing company that got me going into graphic design. And graphic design was like my introduction to TC, which was crazy. Like I, I didn't see myself as being a designer, but then I came in communications, learned so much about just the DNA and the heart and the culture of TC. And since then, Alex and I served in groups together. We've actually, you know, went from that to broadcast and, and care also, in addition to um being able to um, you know, now come into care and outreach. And so it's been incredible. We started in twenty twelve, October of twenty twelve, so we're coming up on eight years um next month. And um it's just been incredible to be a part of, like absolutely incredible to be a part of. Um so yeah, that's kind of just like me getting to TC. I mean, there's a whole story behind that, God's sovereignty, um just incredibly amazing, but I know we came here to talk about a whole host of things, so I don't wanna take it all up on that.
No, that's great.
That's right. For, and, and anybody that's listening right now, um Curtis is like, um I don't know, just one of my favorite people on planet earth. And um and somebody that I respect, um you know, deeply, greatly. He is just such a great example
Yeah.
um of what it is for those of you who are transformers on here to live in upward inward outward life.
Yes.
I told, I've told him many times, there's a um, I can definitely tell that he's praised, there's a um, there's a tenderness that he has toward Jesus when you start talking about Jesus. This man, like there's something, and I was just like, man, I want that, like I want that, I want that relationship. So anyway, just a man, seriously, a man of just like incredible integrity.
Yep.
Um incredible um character and just um like Alex said, a huge heart to love people. So um I think that is the biggest credibility um ever.
Yes.
And so um let's jump in though, let's jump in, let's talk about, let's talk about prayer.
Alright.
We, we love you. We love you, bro, and we're excited.
I love y'all too. And uh, man, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. So.
Way kind, way kind.
No, that's real. I wouldn't say that. It's real, for sure. So prayer, right? I was just, I was thinking through how excited I was to be able to chat with you and Pastor um KJ to talk through prayer because I think people have a really hard time almost kind of grappling with what prayer is. And it's no mistake that last week we talked through reading scripture and what it looked like to read scripture and why we read scripture. And so now we're gonna talk about what prayer is. And so just a very simple question, what is it? How is prayer?
Yeah, yeah. So first I need to give a shout out to my wife cuz she, I just saw that she posted four hearts on here, so I'm just, I love you babe.
No, no, okay, I love you baby, I'm fine. I love you baby.
Okay, alright. Um so yeah, prayer, you know, if we broke it down, there's a lot of different things. One, prayer is something that I think is intimidating to a lot of people. Um.
Yes.
KJ, you mentioned it when we first started, just sometimes you'll see people pray and it's just like, dude, like this dude like had a main line to Moses or like maybe Yoda, I don't know, but like, and you're like, wow, how's this happen? And, and I even think about when I first came to TC and, and PD talked a lot about quiet time and, and not getting a distorted view of what quiet time is and, and things like that. And if I just break it down like real simple, prayer, if you look at the most powerful scripture in all of scripture that everything lands on, it's the Great Commandment. Love God with your whole heart, soul, mind and strength. Love your neighbor as you love yourself. If you listen to that scripture, he's telling us that everything that exists um lands here, it lands here in the love God with your whole heart. And so if I'm gonna love somebody, I need to take the opportunity to know them. I need to take the opportunity to not just tell them what I think about them, but especially when you're talking about the Creator and Designer of all things, how am I coming not necessarily with all the processes and the disciplines, but coming with the heart posture to say, I, I need to listen?
Yeah.
And so sometimes that's intimidating cuz you're like, okay, I'm supposed to hear from God now, but as Alex said already, not an accident that y'all talked about scripture these last couple of weeks. Scripture speaks tons. There's tons of examples of prayer. The Psalms are prayers that were intended to be put to music. When we sing, you know, and hear music that's quote worship music, so many times the lyrics are pointing us to something that is an expression to God, to hear from Him.
Yeah.
So, so I say, love God, know God, so that we can experience His love. I think that's the whole purpose and point of prayer. There's a lot of things that we do in that
Yeah.
to, for that to be what the experience becomes, but I think that's the main, the main deal is loving God and knowing God and, and whatever order you see it, like you may not have a clue about Him, but you, you slow down and, and there's things that happen all around us, people pouring into us or whatever. Um but the prayer element, um we make it a little mystical sometimes, we make it a little extra sometimes. You and I are talking right now and I think that there is a reverence that exists in prayer, but we, you know, I mean, we all joke that sometimes, you know, you're like, we're talking right now, like, okay, we gonna pray? Yes, I'll pray now. You know, like, you know, it's like we come back into this whole other phase, alternate personality or whatever, but anyways.
Personality.
So true, so true, man.
But um no, I, I think we have an opportunity to communicate, not just tell, he, he invites us, cast your cares upon me. I care about you. He invites us to that what will be bound on earth will be bound in heaven. So he's giving us permission to come to Him. It says, come boldly before the throne of grace. So he gives us permission to approach Him. That's unlike any other king. You know, if you read the Old Testament, it talks about the king, you had to have special permission to come. When Jesus came, he broke down that barrier and said, you have permission to come. Come, set at my feet, come, hear my heart. And so scripture gives us opportunity to that, music gives us opportunity to that, music that points to Him. Let's be real, like let's make sure that it's something that really is something that comes from scripture and points to Him. It's not individualistic and just about, this is what I want, what I need. He says, come, bring those needs before me, but man, we have the opportunity to hear from the Creator and Designer of all things. And so um anyways, that's my, that's my first toss out there.
That's great. So why we pray and what prayer is, is really sitting down to get to talk to God.
Yes.
Right? And, and the most simple form, it's the opportunity that we get to be able to commune with Him and talk with Him and get to know Him.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
And. Well, I was just gonna say, um I, I think about, think of all the spots that we pray in that are kind of like the normals, you know, like we pray with Jax at night, sometimes we end up praying for apple juice and we pray for T-Rex, you know. But those are important to Him. He's gotta bring them to God. The beautiful things is what is the recognition though of, of who God is, right?
Yeah. Somebody write that down.
We, we pray, we pray, um we pray over our meals. Um we say our prayers at night, we pray over our meals. We pray for the sick. When a friend shares something with us, we pray. So those are, those are all examples of, of just coming before Him and sharing what is on our heart. He wants that. Um but I, I just, I go back again that like he wants an opportunity that it's not necessarily always gonna be the thing. There's scripture, if you look at Matthew chapter six, we all know the Lord's prayers there. But some of those scriptures, he literally says, hey, this is what prayer can look like. Jesus got away, like he got away from the crowds and he spent some time, you know, to just really be able to hear and, and, and to kind of separate from the things. But the reality is, is that is equipping us and building our relationship with Him so that as His sheep, we recognize the shepherd's voice in and amongst wherever we are and whatever we're doing. Cuz you're not always gonna go get held up in, in a special little pillow space with the, with the closet and the door shut. We gonna, we're gonna go live life. And so God wants to communicate, we can pray to Him anytime, all the time. I even go back to thinking of like, um you know, someone saying, well, I can't pray in this space cuz I'm at work or I'm at school. Like, no, like we can pray anywhere all the time. I just wanna hit that. Like we can pray anywhere all the time.
Yeah.
Um but I do think we do need to have some dedicated space to where we're allowing Him to, to really communicate with us, massage our hearts and give us, you know, more big word revelation. He wants to reveal Himself to us.
Yes, yes.
I just have one more thing to say and then I'm gonna, I'll toss it off cuz I could talk about this all day and ask questions all day, but I think there's an element for me personally um that comes trusting, right? That comes to trusting and, and, and believing who God is, so that I can believe in Him. Um and I think that is for me at least, what I've learned in the last few years is um I, I would end up praying, right, or just talking with Him, but there was still an element of distrust or like disbelief almost.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I don't know, I wanna talk about that for a minute, right? Like what, the element of trust in our relationship with the Father or choosing to believe, right, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
Or praying, or choosing to believe, there's, there is a, there's a choice there with our, the posture of our hearts and our words.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. So I've thought about this quite a bit. I grew up in church, so prayer has been a part of my life since I was a kid. You know, my parents taught me, my parents prayed with me, so that's always been a thing. We can almost lose sight of the value and actually the power and purpose that's in prayer because it's become, sometimes it, it can become a regiment or a ritual. Um when, when people talk about they wanna join our prayer team at TC and.
That was on, that was my first role. Here at Transformation Church, the best.
Right. Somebody submits a prayer request. Let's be honest, sometimes we think that somebody we're gonna go to is gonna have the magic spell that they're gonna recite over us, the pixie dust is gonna flow and then everything's gonna be awesome and good, right?
Yeah.
And um and so there is an importance of, of recognizing, one, God's given us the Spirit. Um if you look at Romans chapter eight, verses twenty-six through twenty-nine, it's just twenty-five, even going back to that. The Spirit knows the mind of God. God's revealing His mind and heart to the Spirit. So going back to um you know, just knowing the will and the heart of God, seek first His kingdom, um knowing all those things. He wants again to communicate His will, He wants to do all those things. So like going back though to, to Alex and what you were referencing, prayer sometimes can be almost be like this secondhand thing, like, well, I'm supposed to do something right now. I gotta earn my space to, to like, I gotta believe before I'm gonna say it out loud. Or I gotta, I gotta really know what this is gonna look like, almost bring to God how this is gonna be resolved. And God's saying, will you just stop and come? The disciples said, where else will we go? Lord, you have the words of life.
Stop and come.
Yeah.
And so.
I wanna see the hearts on that one.
David Crowder has a song and a friend told me about it and I went and listened to it and one of, and this is my paraphrase, but the words say, Lord, this is all that I can say right now, this is all that I can do. And really what it is, it's a stop and it's a pause.
Yes.
It's saying, I didn't expect myself. I think we, we talk about it all the time at TC. We trust the Spirit and grace to save us, but then we trust only ourselves to continue our sanctification. And we need to trust Him and His continued work in us. And so He wants to hear from us, He wants to hear our hearts. But you're not trying to put together the special words or coming with the resolution. Again, Creator and Designer of all things, eternal Lord says, come to me.
Yes.
Cast your cares upon me, I care about you. I mean, there's a reason His ways are higher than our ways. I'm gonna acknowledge you as the majesty. I'm gonna acknowledge you as the king. And so sometimes we need help to do that though. Sometimes you maybe need to call up a friend and say, I can't do this right now. Pastor Derwin said this at the end of a sermon just a couple of weeks ago and it stuck out to me like, wow, and, and just reminded me. So if you look at Ra, Romans chapter eight, um verse twenty-six, it talks about this Holy Spirit praying for us. Pastor Derwin literally made this statement as he was finishing his sermon. He said, Holy Spirit, pray for me. And I was like, I almost feel like that's how we should start every prayer.
Yes.
Like, sit down, Holy Spirit, lead me in this time cuz it, now, I don't want you to trip up and thinking like again that there's a specific order that has to happen, like the, the Lord's prayer does say, hey, let's start with acknowledging God as Lord. Let's acknowledge that we want His name to be glorified above all things. And that's not as much about an order as that is again, our recognition that He's Lord.
Yes.
Like it's, it's a, it's a coming before Him and saying, Lord, I'm acknowledging you. I think Matthew talks about, don't be busting up in here with all your babbles about stuff, right? It's like, it's saying, no, like come and recognize that you are in the presence of a king, but a, a king that calls you son or daughter.
Come on, man.
And, and so um there's a reverence there, there's an acknowledgement of His power and His sovereignty. But I think that his humility is just amazing and that the fact that he kneels down, you know?
Yeah.
Jesus, above all things, stepped down below angels and took the form of us to be with us. He still takes that posture now interceding for us. He's given us the comfort of the Holy Spirit. So he wants to give us a space. It is a slowdown. I'll be straight up, you all know this, sometimes TC, you're like, woo, I'm running and rolling, what are we gonna do with all this? Like, um the slowdown is so important because man, you miss stuff sometimes, you know, you'll miss stuff sometimes. And that's not just, again, I'm not trying to like, some people like practice the silence and solitude thing. That's a thing I've done occasionally. That's a hard one. But there's a lot of different practices that, that you could talk about as far as what, what connects you in there. We go back to my story of going to element, you know, elementary education and then graphic designer, leading worship, doing all these different things. Like we all have a path and we all have a story and we all have different things going on. I think the core that we need to go back to is again, go back to that Great Commandment. And, and then go back to the Lord's prayer. These are key things that speak to, here's a way to approach Him and, 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 and not receive from Him, cuz I think we all know this, but there's a reality, if we're being honest with ourself. I need a fix right now, God, cuz I'm just not at peace. I'm anxious. I'm coming and I'm anxiously expressing. He's not saying, don't come.
Yeah.
But he's saying, come and let me re, release the anxiousness so that you can really hear me, so you can really know me. And uh yeah, I, I could go on and on, but.
No, that's super good, bro. That's super good, man. Um oh man, I'm trying to get to ahead of myself cuz you just said a lot right there.
I did, I did say a lot of things.
No, that was.
Y'all know I'm a processor, so I love being able to do it.
Latch on to that, but I'll, let's just move to the next question for now.
Yes.
Okay.
Cause that's just a lot that you said, it was really good. So thank you for sharing that. And so let's talk about like um habits though.
Mm-hmm.
Or practices, right? So you, you definitely hit on um you definitely hit on like, okay, how we should approach you, even talked about like how we should pray. In essence, you, you, you referenced the Lord, the Lord's prayer. When Jesus says like, okay, our Father in heaven, your name be honored as holy, like so you, you acknowledge who He is first. But let's talk about, you know, like you said, um okay, we can pray everywhere all the time. So what might that look like in somebody's job or, you know what I mean? Or if you're a stay-at-home mom or stay-at-home dad, or if you're a student or, you know, whatever the case may be, what are some ways? What are some good practices or good rhythm or good habits that you can approach when you're talking about prayer? What would you say?
But I mean, I, I think especially this is being a parent now and there's sometimes you're like, when do you find, when do you find quiet time? One of the things that starts my day is I love it, but Jax wants to see Pastor KJ on YouTube and we're gonna sing some worship.
Right.
And so like that immediately takes my mind and my heart to the upward. And, and so like look for spaces that introduce you, you know, like again, not to a holy huddle, but like just a renewing of your mind.
Come on, damn.
We all need that. Um.
Can somebody type an amen for me?
Somebody does, I write that down, but.
Can somebody type that for me?
I mean, here's the thing, what you just said is so important because it takes it down to like ground level.
Yes.
It's have eyes to see and ears to hear.
Yeah.
When we can just be, and we can be with Him all day long, and I think we overcomplicate it and you just love it for all of us in such simple words.
Yeah.
Just find those moments that are holy and they are good, right where you are and lean into His presence cuz He's already there.
Yeah, yeah. You, you need time for you. We all know that, that's health, period. That's
For sure.
You need time for you and, and you need to figure out what that is. Some nights, that's when he um wants me to, you know, hang out in his room until he falls asleep, but he's just laying there, so I'm chilling on the floor and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna use that time to talk to the Lord a little bit. Um you know, some, I know that once kind of the house, my wife goes to work uh really, really early, so she goes to bed early. I, that's my time to try to look and say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at God's word. I'm gonna take some time to be still and pray. Um it can be different for so many people. Some of you, it might be at your morning walk and, and you put earbuds in with nothing. It just helps plug your ears up so you're not hearing the world around you and you kind of walk in that. Um so just looking for spaces in the day that can introduce. KJ, I remember you and I talking when we were meeting with a bunch of the guys and just put alerts in your phone.
Yes.
Like literally that just say, hey, I know that for my week, this is what this looks like and so I can, I can insert, it might be the beginning of the day. I know I'm gonna have times here, here and here. And it's a pause and, and a recognize. And this is me being straight up. As I'm sharing these things, these are things processing in my life that, that I wanna do, that I wanna do, um I wanna do better cuz I know that they're, that call, like we're called to that. We're called to an opportunity to know the Lord. And it shouldn't be an obligation, that should be a desire, right? Uh we know though with the, with the rat race of the world, um it's hard to establish that sometimes. One of the things that um Alex, you talked about this with your kids in the sense of like when the whole pandemic hit and how you started, okay, I gotta schedule before it becomes routine. Um one of the things.
Remember that?
Yeah, I do. It stuck because I'm still trying to figure it out, like.
Somebody wrote the joke for me, I forgot. That's real.
But one of the things that y'all introduced in this was rhythm.
Yeah.
And, and I'm thinking about rhythm over regiment. You might need regiment. I'm not saying you get rid of regiment.
Yeah.
But um but make sure rhythm over regiment, cuz regiment, you can start to cancel some things out. You almost check the box and you're like, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Like allow the Lord to like point out to you that there's spaces. Sometimes, man, it's like, I remember a couple of weeks ago, our team just in the minute knew it was time to just like, we were gonna take a few minutes and pray. Now granted, we're on a church staff, we have an opportunity to sit there in that moment and do that. But I think God introduces opportunities for you, um for you to connect and, and spend some time with Him. Look for those. And I would say like over time, think about times where you wanna do that in even more concentrated ways. Um you know, if that's a silence and solitude thing. A great book that um our staff introduced to us was Face to Face by Ken Boa.
Ken Boa.
It's loaded with scripture. Like you may be struggling even like, I don't even know what to pray right now. Well, here's a reminder, Romans chapter eight, verse twenty-six, the Holy Spirit prays for us. Um really literally interceding on our behalf for God's will, right? For us to know God's will, for us to walk in God's will. Um but that book is just loaded with scripture that starts you with adoration. It starts you with ways of just worship and recognition of who He is. It goes. It starts you with ways of just worship and recognition of who he is. It goes into things of confession. It goes into things of, of renewal. And so there's tons of scripture there that just invite you to really have an opportunity to, to have your mind renewed with the reality of who he is. And who that makes us. And, and I think that sometimes, you know, we all need support in that because there is a ton of information coming at us constantly. That's just a reality. So let's, let's look at things that's going to really point us upward. And, and that will bring about real transformation inward. Trust him for the inward transformation. We're not gonna conjure that or make that happen ourselves. We're not gonna rally the troops and make that transformation happen in us. Trust him to do that. And I think the biggest thing is stopping and pausing and looking for places that you have the opportunity to connect with others, connect with him and, uh, yeah.
One of the things that, as you were talking, came to mind was, uh, Pastor Owen did an incredible sermon series last year called Insurgents. Walked us through the Lord's Prayer. And I remember, I mean, we got the blessing and honor to sit under his teaching and be on staff where we can talk about this all day, like you said. Through that sermon series, I began to see prayer so differently. It almost like it, I was overcomplicating it for so long. And when I began to look at the Lord's Prayer as like my guide, for how I commune with him, for how you talk to him, for how you. Like you said earlier, even when I'm, when I have angst, I can go back to that. Right? He's my father upward, my father, right? You're good, you're worthy. I can trust you. Hallowed be thy name. We give you honor, right? Give us this day and then we're petitioning, Father, we need you. Broken without you. And so for me, that has been so, I think, redemptive and healing to be able to sit and look at scripture and be like, man. Like it's actually already here for me. I don't have to muster up like a fancy prayer, right? That's super tidy. Just open up the Bible, read his word and then. Or like you said earlier, we can have times where we're just sitting quietly, but that for me has been a really good starting point. Um, whenever I don't know what to pray. I don't know what to say. Or when I, when I don't know what to read, I go back to the Lord's Prayer and say, Father, you're good.
Oh, that's really good. I mean, you think, KJ, you mentioned like, what are some of the specifics when you're thinking about, okay, we're on a church staff, but you know, the, the other throne room that exists in most houses and businesses is the bathroom. Just take a minute, take a second, you know? One of the most private moments you're gonna have throughout the day, take a minute, right? Um, you know, there's a lot of different spaces that, that we can consider or whatever. But again, it, it doesn't always have to be thirty minutes to an hour. Um, and at the same time, again, you wanna set aside time that you get that, but you know, um, so yeah.
So that, uh, leads us to, uh, kind of one of our next points and questions. And this is something that hopefully those that are watching or listening and when this gets out into the world even more. We'd love for you to press into it, cause it's one of those things that people really have a talent that they're standing and struggling with. So here it goes. Uh, what do we do when we feel like God, um, is not listening? What happens? What do we do when we feel like he's not answering our prayers? Explain it, Pastor Curtis.
Are y'all ready for this? Y'all ready? No. My goodness. You know, um, a few years ago, I was going through just a crazy season. And I kept bringing something up to God and I kept bringing it up to one of my mentors. My mentor looked at me and he said, stop. And I was like, what? He said, stop praying about it. He's like, it's your focus. And I was like, well, what am I, what am I supposed to do with that? And he said, I'm gonna pray on your behalf. Trust that I'm gonna do that. But I want you to literally see the difference of you taking your eyes off of it. And I was like, okay. And it was such a awesome thing for me because I realized, again, it was another one of those moments where really I was pushing, pressing, wanting, want, just wanting satisfaction, wanting like, okay, I got this figured out now. And God was like, I, I'm not telling you that right now. You're not ready to hear it. You wouldn't know what to do with it. And, and so it was a, there is a reality that sometimes God's like, I'm still here. But I need your, you know, you think about it like, if you were struggling with something, if your focus becomes the thing, your focus is not on him. One of the most relevant things that I've heard PD say, um, in a lot of years is the fact that we wouldn't even think about it, but so many times we're worshiping the thing that we're bringing before God versus really worshiping him. And, and so it could be a great thing. It could be an amazing thing. You might be, I'm, I'm wanna, Lord, are you, have you called me to the ministry, you know? I wanna show you all around the opportunities that you're having to live life on mission, you know, like. So now granted, y- you could be praying for somebody who's lost, right? Invite somebody else into the space. I think that's one of the keys. The other piece is praying, praying for others. Some, you know, literally, uh, what are the, some of the other things going on that you know of? I mean, you know that friends that are going through stuff or family members or whatever. Take the time, slow down and begin to pray for some others, um, trusting that God's heard you. You didn't, he didn't forget. The only thing he forgets, he chooses to forget, and that's our sin. He does not forget when we bring something before him. So, so that, again, this is me talking right now, what we're saying, we all gonna be there going, Lord, why?
And so Pastor Curtis, I think you hit the nail on the head, and I think there's another side to this, right? I think there's a, I think about this a lot. I, I literally had conversations with people and they say, um, I prayed, but like prayer doesn't work for me. Like God doesn't answer my prayers. So this doesn't work for me. And so I think what's important is like, um, holding God necessarily, holding God to promises he didn't say he would keep. You know? And I think sometimes when we say prayer doesn't work, what we're really saying is, God did not give me what I want.
That's right.
Sometimes we say, God did not give, God didn't answer my prayers, but it's really that God didn't give me the answer that I wanted.
Whatever circumstance.
We want.
That we want.
And so, and so context is so important. Like, like understanding the scripture in context, understanding, um, what God did promises. A lot of times our prayers are like taking, I like to say, like taking Monopoly money to the bank and saying like, can you put this in my account? And they're like, we don't necessarily accept this. I am hearing your prayers. Sometimes God loves you and he loves you so much that even when you ask for prayer, he's like, no.
Right. Let me tell you.
Things that God, one of the most loving ways that God can love us and answer our prayers is by telling us no.
Come on Pastor KJ. No, I was just, and this, this goes back to, you said earlier, to say a big word, the sovereignty of God. Which really just means God's will and, and how he moves through things. And so I'll say this much, hearing you Pastor KJ and, and talking through this. One of the things that has been helpful for me when I'm praying is remembering that because I serve a really good father. He, his, his best interest for me will always be what he leads with. So when I come to the, when I have a conversation with him, when I'm communing, I can trust him. Because he is working all things out for my good and his glory, whether I. Or not. So when I pray, I'm reminding myself that I'm coming to him because he's actually the orchestrator and the worker of all things. A door is closing, it's because he allowed it to close. Opening, if someone's removed, if a prayer's not answered, it's, it's because he loves me. And I think. In the family of God, we have a hard time reconciling the hard things of life. Um, and we might pray, I mean, I've prayed for endless hard things in my life to be removed, um, for healing, for failing. And I may, I, I haven't seen some of those come to fruition on this side of heaven. God's goodness or his character or who he is. When I pray, I almost remind myself that he's still good. Unanswered prayer does not say that he's not answering the prayers of his family for the good and of the ki- of the kingdom of God.
No, that's really good. One of the things that really sticks out to me a lot. Our tendency is if, if the enemy, the devil, right? If he and his minions can get us into a thought process of walking away from our true source of hope and comfort. And getting into isolation. Then he'll tear us down. And so like, there is a reality of like, the, the prayers that get unanswered, I just wanna encourage anybody out there. Isolation is not gonna be the answer. Walking away from God's not gonna be the answer. Like he does love you greatly. Alex, you, you said that so well. He loves you greatly. He wants his best for you. He is not gonna let you accept anything less than his goodness. And so he wants, he's gonna press. He's a gentleman. But he's gonna press. And so like, he's going to just lovingly be that whisperer. He's gonna lovingly show up in times and be like, the billboard, you know, you think of what was it, um, Bruce Almighty's driving down the street, turn to the left, you know, now go straight. I promise you the gift is coming, you know, like. Like sometimes he will, you're like, oh my goodness, you know? But there's other times where you're like, Lord, I don't, I don't know where you are in this. He's not afraid of your honesty in that space. But I just wanna encourage you, continue to go to him. And invite other people into the space with you. You know, that's the other piece. He's, this is not a Lone Ranger thing. This is not a us, this is not an individual thing. The, the body of Christ is a family. And so we need to invite each other in the spaces where like, man, my prayers aren't being answered. Cause the conversation that we're having right now is one that I'm sure that many of us could have about something that we're praying about right now. And there'll, there'll be answers come in that space. There will be, you know, and it may not be the answer or the one we want to hear or expected to hear. But I think the thing is, is it's gonna point us back upward. One other thing I wanted to hit on, you were talking about context, KJ. Delight yourself in the Lord. He will give you the desires of your heart. Psalm thirty seven, if you take a look at that, read Psalm thirty seven, it's one of the many Psalms where David is just like, yo, people be doing crazy stuff and yet they're experiencing prosperity, they're doing all this different stuff. He's so frustrated and he's talking and, and like the Lord just shifts his heart posture. He's like, no. Let's go back to upward. Delight yourself in me. Delight yourself in my kingdom. Delight yourself in my way. Seek first the kingdom of God and his ways and these things will be added unto you. Not the transactional element that we're, that we think right now when we first hear it, but literally God's going, I'm gonna let you see my heart. I'm gonna let you hear what it is I'm doing in the world, even though all around you, there's tons of voices that are shouting a different message. I'm gonna give you the mystery that is me and say, I still the great I am. I'm gonna speak into this space that lets you see today and your day amongst all of the world. I'm present with you and every single child I've created to speak my life and my hope and my purpose into your life. I'm gonna let you see me. I want you to know me. And so it's not, it's, those verses are not transactional. They are literally God inviting us to know his will and his way. And if we know, I mean, you look at the world around us, what we're experiencing here, what people have experienced all across the world in different ways and a host of ways. The chaos can just feel so crazy and God's going, I want you to hear my voice in the midst of it. Cause I'm speaking, I'm here, I'm working. I know there's pieces of you don't understand, but I promise you, I'm with you. But we need each other for that.
No, knowing him to become more like him. Listening from him and then we become more like him, sitting with him so we can become more like him. And as we do that, the prize is becoming more like Jesus. And when we refocus our gaze to that, the transformation of our hearts and our minds and our souls, when we sit with him, we're becoming more like him. That's the gift.
You know, um, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda, I'm gonna reiterate this same point. I kinda made this at the end of our time last week as we kinda come to a close on this. Um, I kinda said this to the end of my ti- at the end of our time last week when we were talking about reading scripture. And I really feel led to reiterate this one more time for those, cause we might have a totally different group of people that are listening. But I think, you know, Curtis, you spoke to the Lord's Prayer, like you said, you said, uh, starting, Jesus gave, give us an instruction and says, um, okay, our Father in heaven, your name be honored as holy, right? So we, uh, we, we acknowledge God, um, as being, um, a holy, um, righteous God, right? And then you, but then you also said, you quoted another verse that says like, cast your cares with him because he cares for you. And so I think it begs, it begs like the question, like, who is God? Like what, who, when we're praying, what is the character and the nature of the person we're talking to? Uh, you know, what is the disposition of the person we're talking to? What is the relationship with the person that we're talking to? Like, you know what I mean? How do they, how, you know, that's so important and you said, you even mentioned earlier in the beginning. Like, it's, it's one thing if you're praying to a stranger. Praying to, you know, a father. You know, who loves you. And I just wanna encourage like all of us one more time that like, God is not playing hide and seek with you. From the beginning, like from the beginning of creation, it has always been. About communion. With his children.
And, and did whatever it took.
Whatever, it starts with Eden. And you know, the garden Eden, communion, sin came in, broke that and he said, alright, I'll figure something out south. Then eventually it goes to a tabernacle. And then, okay, whatever, we're working that out. That doesn't, you know, and then eventually he goes, then his presence is in the temple, but the whole time, you're looking at this, this, come on y'all. But just try your best to think about this, right? I know our brains can't handle the capacity of it, but like, the God who existed before time. Created the universes. The universe is plural, right? With, with, with a word. With a thought, like somebody that massive, somebody that holy. So I think even, even if he did reveal himself to us, we couldn't even, we couldn't even understand it. But when it gives the scene in Revelation, I think it's chapter four or five, I can't remember. But it's like the ang- the, the creatures, the angelic creatures who are in his presence. The only thing that comes to their mind is like, holy, 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 holy. And they've been saying that for eons. They will continue to say it, because the more they see him, the more it reveals who his nature is. And they just keep saying holy, holy, like this is who we're talking about. And at the same time, he sa- he says, like you said, he humbles himself and says, I want to commune with you. I'm not trying to hide from you. I'm not trying to play hard to get. I'm trying to create a way, and in fact, I was reminded of this, uh, scripture, I'll grab it real fast. I was reminded of scripture in Matthew, when, um, where did that thing go? I think it's in Matthew twenty seven, though. Here it goes. Matthew twenty seven, and it talks about when Jesus died around verse forty, no, 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 I, I take that back. Uh, around, okay, here we go, around verse fifty. Matthew twenty seven, it says, but Jesus cried out again with a loud voice and gave up his spirit. So Jesus died. And then it said, suddenly the curtain in the temple was torn in two. Check this out. The Bible gives this like with like, with specificity, right? It says, from top to bottom. The earthquake and the rocks were split. And then it goes through a bunch of different stuff. But the point is, the moment that Jesus sacrificed and gave himself up for us. This place where he had, um, isolated his presence to in the temple. The curtain that would separate the holies and holies, like the presence of God tears. Now, also like from a historical context, they, I, I think I believe they said the curtain was like, I think six inches thick, right? And the moment Jesus gives up his spirit, the, the bell tears from top to bottom. Meaning, meaning that God's idea this whole time, again, he's like, I'm just doing you again. And there are no limits to my, to my love for you and my desire to commune with you. And so when we're talking about this prayer, I just wanna encourage you, even if you feel like God is not speaking, um, or God is not talking back or like, what is he even still, like what's going on? Just understand, please know that his desire has always been, always will be, um, to have communion with you. With, with us, you know, with us as people.
Really good, KJ. That's so important, cause I was thinking that when you've, when you started. There may be somebody on here today, God is a stranger. He's an idea. And, and he has done so much to make himself known and wants you to know that he, he loves you. And, um, and I think it's, I mean, we could probably point to a ton of different scriptures that speaks to that. But I would just encourage that person, again, reach out to somebody, you know, you're not meant to try to figure this out on your own. And again, he's not hiding from you. He, he wants to be present and from the beginning, he's wanted to dwell within us.
Yes. Pastor Curtis, as we close, give a word to the person, cause I think there's one, so we talked about, in essence, like, people not approaching God because he, because they, they might feel like he's a stranger, they don't know him. But talk to the person who may have known, like, who, who knows God, who has maybe gone to church for a while. And they don't wanna approach God. And they don't wanna approach God because of guilt, because of shame. Um, and they're, and 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 so they know that God is there, but they're like, at this point, the amount of time that I've jacked up or um, I've made mistakes, but this mistake, like this, this one right here, like, there's no what, like God, God, even if God loves me, I don't think he likes me right now. And so they are, they're afraid to approach his throne, right? They're afraid to even talk to him cuz they don't think he wants to talk to them. Could you say something to that person?
Sure, yeah, I think, so a bunch of different things that come to mind. First Timothy, actually Second Timothy, I believe, chapter one, verse nine speaks to the reality that our calling is not based on our performance, but his purpose and his grace. So he's established something that says, I'm going to establish the status quo. I'm gonna establish the foundation. Trust me for that. That's one thing. The other piece that I think about is um, you might be thinking, you know, God, God can't forgive this. Corinthians, and I don't remember what cha- I think it's the first book of Corinthians, but he says this in a number of different occasions. All is writing to the most jacked up like crazy way of living people and he says, to the saints at Corinth. He called them saints. Because the establishment comes through Christ. The one who could do it, did it. We could not. I would even encourage you, take a look, Hebrews chapter two, we've been going through that, Hebrews chapter two, the very first like one to four verses. It it references this thing of like, hey, make sure you don't drift away. The drift away was going back to your way of doing, not necessarily the the bad way of living, it was the dependency on your ideals, your principles, your things, he's saying no. The only hope we have is to cling to what Jesus has done, the salvation he has brought to us. That's the only chance we got. So if today you're thinking, I, I can't be forgiven for this. And real talk, this is me preaching to Curtis too. It's pride. We were never intended to. We were never intended to make our own provision. We could have a whole other discussion about responding to who God is and walking faithfully and all those other things, but it's gonna be his life in us. We gotta lay our stuff down and so I just wanna encourage you, if that is you today, you're all broken up about it. I mean, David in the Psalms, he was all broken up, he was totally broken up, he literally committed adultery, had the woman's husband killed. All of these things, he's just ripped to pieces. And if you look at Psalm, I believe it's fifty one, created me a clean heart, oh God, renew a right spirit within me, don't cast me away. Restore the joy of salvation, you know, and you could look at that and go, oh, well, mine's even worse, I don't, it doesn't matter what it is. If we could do it and make it happen, Jesus didn't have to go to the cross, but he did. And when he did, he also came out of the tomb so that it would be his resurrected life. Living in us. And so we all gonna need reminder to that on a whole lot of days. But I'm sharing that with you today and I appreciate the question, KJ. Cuz I know you've poured that, both of you have poured that into my life and our families' lives at different times. We gotta continue to remind each other, don't drift back into my principles, my way, I'll get it done. Continue to hold tightly to what Christ has done on our behalf.
That's the gospel, the good news, man, the good news, thank you.
And so Pastor Curtis, thank you so much, I I actually want you to pray for us, as we talk about prayer, I want you to pray for us as we close. And I wanna share this scripture really quick, it's Hebrews chapter four, uh, verse sixteen, it says, let us then approach God's throne of grace with confidence. So that we may receive mercy and find grace to help us in our time of need. So we, we can approach his throne um, of grace, I love that idea, like when you think about a throne, you think a person of power. No, like my throne is a throne of grace, is a throne of restoration. Throne of mercy, so so approach it with confidence and boldness, so you can receive the grace and the mercy that you need. Um, when you need help, so for those who are on there listening, um, don't be afraid. Um, he he wants his arms off wide open for you to receive him. This is our last week. Hosting you guys. Thank you Pastor Curtis for joining us as well and so next, but next week, we're gonna continue the conversation or prayer with guess who?
Will be joining us next week. To continue the conversation um, on prayer. And I'm excited because Curtis, you mentioned a lot of this, uh, a lot of this, the theme, I guess I should say, of community. And what God's called us to within the the body and the church and so she'll hit on that next week. Um, she'll talk through uh, how to pray, uh, through journaling, through other habits and rhythms that we're gonna create too, so join us back next week. We're gonna have an awesome giveaway. So definitely come back for uh, Vicky and the giveaway. Amazing and your hosts will be Chris Brown and Winnie Earp. They're a blast, it's gonna be amazing.
Thank you so much, one more time for spending some time with us today. Can you close us out in prayer?
Absolutely, yeah, let's do it. God, I just um, I thank you that we can come before you. I thank you for everybody that's listening right now and I just pray, God, you know what people need to recognize. We're not asking you to prove yourself, you've proven yourself time and time again, but I come just in agreement that myself, KJ, Alex, our families, this Body of Transformation Church, the people listening right now, that we would take the opportunity to know you. We know you've made the way, you're worthy, you're amazing. And so God, we wanna know you, we wanna walk with you, we wanna experience you. And Lord, we want to truly experience you in a way that we see who you are, we understand better who we are. And Lord, that leads us to just value those around us so that people look and see and know that you are true and you are good. I thank you, God, always that it's beyond our words, beyond my words, you are happening. You are going forth, you are being the perfect, amazing, wonderful God that you are. So we trust that you not only hear us, but you're acting and you're continuing to invite us. We ask all these things and we have hope because of who you are, Jesus, amen.
Thank y'all so much for joining us, thank you. Love you, man.